I'm seven o'clock and I go ahead and call this meeting or. Please call the roll. Councilor Dyer.
President.
Councilor Urban.
Urban.
Councilor Fleck.
Here.
Councilor Merideth.
Here.
Councilor Savage. Councilor Simmons.
Here.
Mayor Solzey.
Here.
I would ask for questions.
I'd like to. To the line of being an idiot to learn everything and to the repelling for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with good routine and justice for all.
Starting this evening with a proclamation. Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas a professional public safety telecommunicator is the vital link between the citizen or victim and the public safety provider who will respond to assist and may apprehend the criminal, save their possessions from fire, save their life or the life of the loved one. And whereas hundreds of dedicated telecommunicators daily serve the citizens of Oregon by answering their requests for law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. And whereas Cottage Grove maintains South Lane 911 and our telecommunicators serve the citizens of Cottage Grove and surrounding area by answering their requests for law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. And whereas the professional telecommunicators of South Lane 911 have shown amazing dedication and loyalty recently in the midst of many challenges. And whereas in 1994, President William J. Clinton signed a presidential proclamation, six, six, seven, declaring the second week of April as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week as a time to celebrate and thank telecommunications personnel across the nation who serve our communities, citizens, and public safety personnel 24 hours a day, seven days, seven days a week. Now therefore, I, Candace Solzey, Mayor of the City of Cottage Grove, Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 14 through 20, 2024, to be Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And Cottage Grove encourage all citizens to join in this observance and show appreciation to the South Lane 911 telecommunicators and all the telecommunicators. And we're going to have Chief Jorge Chase accept this because our telecommunicators cannot leave our posts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
We noticed that our new council, Ms. Conley is attending by phone, so we're, I just want to make a statement to her that if she would like to speak, if she raises her hand, we'll acknowledge that whatever she has to say, she could hear that.
All right. We're good. All right. Now we have a presentation, Tree City USA Recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation and the Urban Forestry Committee of the City of Cottage Grove, like to present to you this recognition of 30 years as a Tree City USA.
I am to be added to the agenda, I see that. Appearance of interested citizens, this is the time for citizen comment. The council will first take comments addressing items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. The council then take comments addressing actual items on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual, individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name, identify whether they are city resident, and if so, which were. Please limit comments to three minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matters scheduled for our public hearing may be provided only during that hearing. The council will not make any decisions based on public comment. However, staff and council may choose to ask questions or comment following the conclusion of citizen comments. All right. We only have one person signed up to speak tonight, and that is Dan Solzey.
I'm being told to be 15 and so. But in the base. Yeah, it's all within the extreme Cottage Grove. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I usually do my complaint here by living in the home there, but I need to verbalize some things to the council to make them aware of some things. I try to visit the homeless camps once a week and do a drive-by and walk through and check for things, but say you so. I find it interesting that the state of Oregon requires us to wear helmets and motorcycles because we weren't smart enough to take care of ourselves. The state didn't want the burden of having to take care of somebody who had to be hospitalized with their supply. We're allowing them to do drugs and we're enabling them to do drugs. We've had 22 district-wide overdoses since January. Eleven overdoses, a current arrest in general and in the camps. Eight of those overdoses have been in the last 14 days. And that is in the two camps that are under the idea of the man camp, the staff camp has not had any in the last 14 days. Fire department and the police department on that last call had to walk and meal in human feces and urine, use needles. And this is just an unsafe situation for not only them, but the citizens that were put into those camps. And we really need to do drugs and keep them clean. I, I know that Jake and his partners are out there today and doing great job because that camp looks a lot different than it did three days ago. So that's been my thoughts are actually on the steering direction. I don't. I don't know what, I don't have the answers. This is just not, not working. And cleaning those camps, keeping it clean, too much. I think this is going to be a step in the right direction. There's non. The nonprofits are going into camps and they're interviewing folks, getting some information. And I asked them today if they would share some of that with us as far as ages, statistics, how many people, because we can't see. They didn't answer as how many people, so get out of the camps. And they said, no, it was a violation, but it's actually not. They just didn't want to share. It's not a violation, but they've shared numbers for us, but they just refuse to. They are invited, enabled them by Indian needles and Narcan. And the folks in the camp. Drugs, they're easy right now. Fentanyl, that's when there's the eight overdoses in the last 14 days. The fentanyl is just hiding there. And so they're, and some officers share this with me. So they're getting together and they're having a backup and they're using the Narcan as a safety net. So they'll do the drugs and then somebody puts breathing, they'll go to the Narcan, bring it back and say, okay, now we have to cut the drugs. So they're using the, the drugs. And the drug dosage is right instead of using it to save lives in an emergency situation. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, public hearings. Public hearing for supplemental budget, staff report by Finance Director for our license. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will now open the public hearing at 7:10 PM. This public hearing will be held for the purpose of taking comments on a city-proposed supplemental budget. We will now have the staff report when this lightens. And then public testimony. We'll take public testimony for all persons testifying, and you'll state your name and address for the record. Then we'll move on to questions from council. And then we will close the public hearing. So we will begin now with the staff report by Ms. Lanes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There is a need to budget for a hundred and fifty thousand police vehicles. Not anticipated the time that the original budget was adopted. The vehicle availability is what necessitates the need to order the vehicles this fiscal year. Yes. I could do that. I still want to spend it. Vehicles are in short supply and this is a community that expires April 12, to be placed or ordered. The proposed supplemental budget is to fund the purchase of two new police vehicles, five Duramoves, in the amount of $125,000. They will be fully fitted to be a police vehicle. Debt service would be approximately $29,500 per year, for five years, based on an interest rate of six and a half percent. At this point, that is an estimation. And the general fund loan proceeds will be increased by $125,000. And then the police department budget, $139,000 additional would be added to the cap level. In order for the vehicle purchase line item. Debt service will be budgeted in this fiscal year 24, 25. It is not anticipated that we would have to start repayment of the loan before next fiscal year. Public hearing is required according to city council. The proposed amount of appropriation is less than 10% of the general fund total appropriations and no new line items are being created with the appropriation. The staff's recommendation that we hold a public hearing, which was noticed with the regular leaving of the city council, five days prior to the hearing. Consider all comments offered during the public hearing. The total cost would be approximately $147,500. That's 610% equal to $29,500 per.
Thank you, Ms. Lanes. We'll now have a public testimony. For all persons testifying, please state your name and address for the record. Any one here speak? Thank you. Questions from the council? Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll have comments on this, but I believe that this is coming up on the agenda. I don't also have a public hearing, so I'd like to fill those in.
Thank you. I'll now close the public hearing at 7:13. I am being, public hearing for ordinance amending the Cottage Grove Comprehensive Plan Land Use diagram map and Title 14 land use district map for 208 South Sixth Street. Staff report by Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor.
This evening, we have a public hearing on the ordinance amending Cottage Grove Comprehensive Plan Land Use diagram map and Title 14. This is type four legislative procedure. The city council will make a final decision on the ordinance based on the complete record, including the planning commission's recommendation and testimony received at tonight's public hearing. These proceedings will be recorded. I'll now open the hearing. 7:14 PM. Amending the Cottage Grove Comprehensive Plan Land Use diagram map and Title 14 land use district map. In accordance with the state law and city land use procedures, I will summarize tonight's type four legislative procedure and standards of review. First, staff will review the staff report and identify the applicable substantive criteria from the city's comprehensive plan and/or state of Oregon statewide planning goals that apply to this proposal. Staff will also review the planning commission's recommendation on this proposal. Following the staff's presentation, we'll take a public testimony and then return it to the staff to present additional material to comment based on the testimony. Following that, council will close the public hearing. Your testimony, arguments, and evidences must be directed toward the identified substantive criteria or other substantive criteria in the comprehensive plan, development code, or statewide planning goals, which you believe apply to this application. Though you raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker or other municipal parties' opportunity to respond, may preclude an appeal or a decision of the proposal of this issue. For anyone wishing to speak, if you're accessing the meeting in person or using video, please raise your hand to be recognized. If you're accessing the meeting using only audio, please announce that you would like to speak. When called upon to speak, you must be recognized by the presiding officer. State your name, address for the public record. We ask that each speaker limit themselves no more than three minutes. Presentations will be timed, and you will be informed when your allotted time has expired. All speakers exceeding the time limit will be asked by the presiding officer to immediately conclude their remarks. If you do not finish your presentation, be sure to provide a copy of your statement to the staff. Written testimony may be offered and will be considered as part of the record. In order to minimize repetitive testimony, organizations are encouraged to have only one person speak for the group. Each person may testify only once unless called upon or request of the council member to respond to a question. Before we begin, the chair and counselors are required to disclose any conflicts of interest and expertise contacts that we have or have with the proposal or the advocate. Does any counselor wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest in this matter? May we please have the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this public hearing, as you remarked, is to receive comments on the proposed amendment of the comprehensive plan and the land use district map and Title 14 for the subject property located at 208 South Sixth Street. It's approximately point zero or 0.15 acres of land owned by Eric Swanson and Amy Kennedy. Again, the proposed amendment to the plan is to go from B central business district designation to C to P community commercial zoning and C community commercial designation to RC residential commercial zoning. The purpose of this application is to preserve the existing use of the property, which is currently a residence. It is, however, in that midtown fringe where it could at some point in time be used as a business use. The RC zone does allow for up to 2,000 square feet of outright permitted office and retail use. So it's a good way of both retaining a dwelling, but also preserving our goal line objectives of having those kind of midtown commercial spaces. Applicable statewide land use goals are goals 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. Goals 15 through 19 are not applicable. The application is also in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan for land use, economy, energy conservation. As stated, the planning commission did hold a public hearing on this item on February 21st, 2024, and recommended approval to council. It's now appropriate, of course, to, to hear public comment before this one. Staff does recommend for those one.
Does council have any questions? So.
For Plating Morgan, was there any objection to residents in the area?
Mayor Castle, Mayor Day, no, they're fine.
Thank you.
At this time, we will receive testimony for interested members of the panel. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. Would anyone like to speak? Anyone else? Any last questions? What's up? Okay. And with that, I will close this public hearing at 7:20 PM. I don't see. Out of all street agreement and funding committee recommendations, staff report by Public Works Development Director, based on.
So Mayor, I think this is where we jump down to the.
The.
Sorry. Motion we approve it.
And the motion of a second, although the paper signified by saying. Motion, yes? All right. Resolutions adopting supplemental budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and making appropriations. Staff report by Finance Director, Ms. Lanes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For us, 294.471 permits the government body to create supplemental budget for the fiscal year in which the regular budget has been adopted for certain and specific reasons. In this case, an occurrence or condition that was not known at the time the budget was prepared requires a change in financial planning, as well as the time the budget was prepared requires, oops, excuse me, as well as the necessity to order in the current fiscal year due to available supply. When a supplemental budget adjusts the fund in terms of by 10% or less, the supplemental budget may be adopted at a regular schedule, maybe in the city council. The budget committee is not required to be involved. A notice of the budget committee consideration, but supplemental budget consideration wasn't included on the council's agenda for the state and was available at least five days before meeting. Supplemental budget is necessary at this time for appropriate funds for the purchase of two police vehicles, Dodge Duramoves, adding loan proceeds to the general fund resources and appropriate an additional $145,000 in the general fund police department for a total appropriation for the department of $4,316,550. Recommendation, after consideration of any public comment, make any necessary adjustments and adopt the resolution. If adopted, the supplemental budget increases the general fund appropriations $125,000. The total expenditure with two vehicles is estimated to be $147,500 or $29,500 per year. Resolution number? 2131. Councilor.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 2131.
Second. We have a motion of second. Any questions? Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor. I had, we had a good opportunity on Friday to, to learn a little bit more about this in the context of the overall lease budget. Recent things behind it, one being the shift in how we are addressing the maintenance of the police vehicles and increasing the preparedness factor, I haven't considered, are not as likely to be out of commission for repairs. The topic does bring up a deeper concern. Runs, runs alongside all the other aspects of the budget. And, and so I just want to make note of that and. Certainly, also, but in terms of this particular item, it makes sense for us to make sure that we're capable of getting that over. The correction that in terms of. Use of police vehicles. If, if gaps in our safety.
And she, we really appreciate you saying later and explaining all the hints and notes of how that all comes together and works. She. Yeah, we have, Councilman.
I'd just like to reiterate a couple of questions I asked Friday to the folks here at the same conference. I'd asked our finance director about why we're not actually spending any money this year. We're actually putting it in the budget, and I'd love for you to give a quick answer to that.
We may spend money this year if the vehicles are delivered before June 30. So it's appropriate that the council recognizes that this is a potential expenditure and your appropriate money to make that purchase. We won't be paying debt perhaps until next year because I'm expecting it to be on a quarterly repayment basis during the year. So we four payments next year, $29,500. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, well, that's great. Any other question? Just summarize for the chief of that, okay? As I, I asked, when we were going with the dog, just said the fours, I believe it was, just because of availability. My question was, oh, gosh, are these, you know, Duranos going to be dependable? And the chief had mentioned that he contacted other jurisdictions and they had great success with vehicles. So those were the two, you know. Those are bad. So, thank you.
Any last? All right. We have a second. While we're going, please follow me. Councilor Merideth.
Hi.
Councilor Simmons.
Hi.
Councilor Dyer.
Hi.
Councilor Fleck.
Hi.
Mayor Solzey.
Hi.
So now this. Resolution amending the comprehensive fee schedule, staff report by Ms. Lanes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You have a change before you this evening on your diet of adding a section for STCPs. And I will get into that further, but I wanted to point that out before I proceeded. The city council has established a comprehensive fee schedule created to include a list of fees for various items and services that the city provides. This is a resolution now amends four sections in the comprehensive fee schedule. Section one, government, this section's proposed to amend. Proposed to be amended to increase the following fees, fingerprinting, adding a fee for fingerprinting and additional pages, as well as all of the other fees listed except for false alarm response in the police department category. This was done to reflect the increased cost of personnel time and the update, upkeep of equipment, specifically the digital fingerprinting unit. Most fees were increased by 10 to 15 dollars. In section four, excuse me, six of the planning, the type one land use review building permit was increased from 0.0015% of value of work with a $25 minimum fee to 0.004% of value of work with a $50 minimum fee. Type two property line adjustment, what consolidation, refat fee was increased from 150 to 400 dollars. In type three, the application general additional use permit, site design review, a master plan development use, variance, class C modification to accrual major are all proposed to increase to $1,200 from $800. In type four, all fees are going to increase from 1,200 plus actual cost, $1600 plus actual cost. Finally, other fees increasing annexation expedited fee from 800 to 1,200 dollars and annexation, public hearing fee from 1,200 to 1,600 dollars, and a multi-unit property tax exemption from 800 to 1,200. Section nine, addition of vouchers. Apartment fees are proposed to increase from a per car cost to a per rider cost. It would be more efficient to charge the fee per individual instead of splitting the fees between cultures. The increase will help offset the increase in maintenance of the vouchers. We are amending. The section regarding system development fees, wastewater. And I don't know that I need to go through every single one of these, but it was based on the construction cost index. And they, it's in the code that it is. And it's in the code that it is adjusted annually in January of each year. And to be adjusted, it needs to be included in the comprehensive fee schedule that's before you. So if you have any specific questions, I'm pretty sure either they or Eric can answer those questions for you. Have any question? Counselor, flag.
So Friday, I asked about our fee increases and that Mr. Martin had a community that, yeah, we're below like other jurisdictions are doing and that we're still absorbing some of that, you know, kind of having to be competitive, you know, and keep our housing development costs, you know, reasonable for values. I guess on the SDC part of that, we didn't have this conversation Friday. And so I'm trying to remember, was it last year we had FCS take a look at our SDC fees? I'm trying to remember, is it last year or the year before? I guess the thing question is I want to make sure that our SDCs are, you know, reasonable and they're necessary, kind of a necessary people. But I want to make sure we're not too high on them.
Mayor, Counselor, but actually, FCS looked at the utility rate fees that we charge for the operation of the utilities. They didn't look at SDCs. SDCs was adopted prior to me, the formula prior to me accepting or being the public works director. And the direction that was approved by council was that each year the SDC fees would increase based on the construction cost index. And it is calculated using the engineering news record magazine with the 20 cities. And that this year, the construction cost index rose 2.6%. So that's how we calculate it each year is staff. We look at that, what that number is each year and then calculate the increases. And the only way we can get them into the actual fee schedule is to include them in a comprehensive fee resolution. So that's why it's included here.
No, and I appreciate that. I was joking before the meeting that they actually used to put this in a consent agenda, so I wouldn't write about it. You know, my concern is one year. We got seven, you know, percent increase years ago. Oh, my gosh. 2.6, I'm not terribly concerned about, but if we go a whole bunch of years without ever doing any sort of comparison with other jurisdictions, that concerns me. So I'd love for us to maybe look at doing that again sometime in the future, is having them, or even us evaluate where we're at as far as the fees go. And that's obviously a very tough comparison because not every city has the same SDC structure. It would be good, I think, to be that much more.
Mayor, Counselor, I appreciate that comment. One of the things that will happen here as soon as we're done with our master plans for water sewer and storm is and we've kind of upgraded the transportation system plan that has the CIP plans in it. The CIP is what's used to look at those SDC calculations to make sure that we're charging the appropriate SDCs to create or pay for the projects that are in the CIP list. So once we have those other master plans done, we can look at those SDCs, make sure that FCS were looked at and make sure that they're appropriate for the capital improvements list. If, take for instance, one of our capital improvement plans was 1998 water master plan. In the water master plan, it was called for a 3 million gallon water reservoir. Because in 1998, it was calculated utilizing what was needed for fire flow in today's. With all regulations that have changed since 1998, it wouldn't be prudent to build a 3 million gallon water reservoir because we wouldn't be able to ship. We wouldn't be able to produce, store, and keep the quality of water necessary to be able to serve it to the citizens. So we're more, instead of looking at a 3 million, we're looking at maybe a 500,000 gallon tank. So those changes in the capital improvement plan may actually go and analyze with the current rates of construction. We might see that the SDC rates need to be reduced because those project lists don't warrant that amount of SDC being charged. So it will see that happen as we adopt these new master plans that include CIP plans.
Anyone else? You have a question?
Uh, Mayor, move of the council adopt Resolution 2132, second.
We have a motion of the second. While the required, please follow along. Counselor, Drer.
Aye.
Counselor, Urban.
Aye.
Counselor, Fleck.
Aye.
Counselor, Mary Day.
Aye.
Counselor, Senate.
Aye.
Mayor, Solsky.
Aye.
I'm prepared to go on. All right. I'm C. First vote for ordinance amended Cottage Grove Comprehensive Plan Land Use这个地图 map and Title 14 Land Use District map for 208 South Sixth Street. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Council has held a public hearing on the proposed amendment of the comprehensive plan, Land Use District map and Title 14 Cottage Grove Development Code Land Use District map to redesignate 0.15 acres of land owned by Eric Swanson and Amy Kennedy of 208 South Sixth Street from B, central business designation and C to P, community commercial zoning to C, community commercial designation and R C residential commercial zoning. The planning commission held a public hearing on the attached ordinance on February 21st, 2024, recommended approval to council. It is now appropriate for that council consider the ordinance. It's recommended that after council deliberation, the council hold the first vote on the attached draft ordinance. The draft ordinance was prepared and has been available for at least one week prior to this meeting, meaning that this ordinance could be adopted in one meeting.
Any questions? This will be ordinance number 3180. Counselor, flag.
And Mayor, move of the council adopt ordinance number 3180, second.
We have a motion of the second. Any second. While the required, please follow along. Counselor, Mary Day.
Aye.
Counselor, Senate.
Aye.
Counselor, Urban.
Aye.
Counselor, Fleck.
Aye.
Counselor, Drer.
Aye.
Mayor, Solsky.
Aye.
Motion, Harris. Goodness, not a city council. But many appointments, staff report by Miss Leins. Thank you, Mayor, counsel. In order to facilitate the budget committee selection process, the council appointed a selection committee and they held interviews. Two big things created from term expirations needed to fill two applications for open zones were received and since the writing of this protocol, we received an additional application from Bernie Donner, who previously served until he resigned during the period of COVID. Committee, by insistence, agreed to appoint Amber Baylor and Bernie Donner to a three-year term expiring 12/31/26. The recommendation of staff to consider making the appointment to the budget committee as recommended by the seven. Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just want to share appreciation for the applications that we have. These volunteer opportunities and they come up from time to time or are vital aspect of making good decisions for the city and its citizens. But so I think everybody who applied and I think encouraged, she didn't get it this time to continue, to seek opportunities. So that would move that the council would start calling Bernie Donner and Amber Baylor to the budget committee, three-year term expiring 12/31/26.
Second. We have a motion of the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. I'm B. Historic Preservation Commission appointed staff report by Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to pass it over to the chair of the subcommittee, Counselor Mary Day, for the subcommittee's recommendation to council.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. The Historic Preservation Commission Subcommittee met and interviewed a candidate, Patty Kenny. We found her extremely qualified with deep local connections and a good understanding of history. And we recommend that she be appointed to a three-year term beginning today and expiring in December 31st of 2026.
Did you make a motion?
I did not.
Or second?
I will make that motion.
Second?
Don't you repeat it?
Second, I'll.
We have a motion of the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Yes. I'm C. Ad hoc Street Improvement Funding Committee Recommendation, staff report by Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce Amber Baylor. She was our, or is our chair of the Ad hoc Street Improvement Funding Committee. This group of individuals appointed by the council and their first meeting was in May of 2023. This evening is their recommendation after nearly 11 months of a lot of hard work that Ms. Baylor will share with you. So it is time to hand it over to Amber.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and councilors. It's a pleasure to be before you at last to present us our final recommendations from the Ad hoc Street Improvement Funding Committee. Y'all don't mind, I would like to just read what we wrote so I don't mistake or leave anything out. So as they mentioned, on May 2023, the city council offered Resolution 2025, creating the Ad hoc Street Improvement Funding Committee. The committee comprised of city councilors, the mayor, and local citizens with support from city staff. There was a lot of support from city staff, so thank you. Reviewed the current street improvement needs, reviewed the available funding, the funding approved budget, reviewed the available funding mechanisms to generate street funding, gathered input from the public, and are now making recommendations to the council. Our last thing to the council, from August 14, 2023, at which time we asked for additional time to formulate recommendations to the council. Since May 29, we've been planning committee meetings, several presentations to local organizations, two fever shows, a town hall, and a few local museums articles. We identified the funding gap between our current PCI payment condition index of 55.4, which is low fair, to our ideal standard level of 72, which is good, which on accounting for inflation is a $35 million backlog or 3.5 million per year over a ten-year period. The committee's vision and objectives were, so first, the vision was to improve the volume of our streets through a fair and equitable use of the funding means that improves and maintains the city streets to a PCI rating of 72, which is a good quality rating, with a priority on materials and collectors for the long-term improvement of property values and mobility in Cottage Grove. Our objective was to research and recommend an acceptable source of funding to the community and stakeholders spouse by the funds for the necessary street recruits. The goal is to support a level and quality of 70 in the street payment condition index for PCI for the materials and collector roads. So on behalf of the Ad hoc Street Improvement Funding Committee, we propose the following recommendations in alignment with our vision and objectives, as stated above. Number one, submit to the voters a 6 cent city gas tax increase to fund street recruits. This would take on 3 cents city gas tax up to 9 cents. Number two, submit to the voters 8.50 cents per $1,000 of assessed property value via a five-year bond measure dedicated to street repairs. Number three, promote and support limited improvement districts for local residential street recruits. Number four, enact upon guidance from legal council via council a limited transportation and utility fees specifically for repairs of roads such as Gateway where heavy truck traffic is a significant factor in Rover. Number five, collaborate with state legislative representatives and council bill with any one with nomination of transportation improvement districts. These districts would charge yearly U.S.C. collective time of registration or tag rule, providing a sustainable road and string for online street maintenance. Number six, continue pursuit of grants that would improve progress of roads. Number seven, partner with LTD by ways supporting efforts to remove roads or offset wear with LTD buses. Number eight, and not create a provision requiring developers to contribute to the cost of air damage to the road system caused by heavy hauling sustained with the development products. Number nine, create an oversight committee tasked with reviewing revenue and expenditures of the street fund reporting at a minimum annually to city district residents to ensure transparency and accountability. And lastly, number 10, commit to significant outreach and education efforts before presenting these measures to voters and then have them hold them for election, ensuring that it's hard and formed, engaged in the decision-making process. These measures aim to address the urgent need for street improvements in our community and ensure the long-term sustainability of our city's road infrastructure. So, certainly, Ad hoc Street Improvement, this is my. Thank you. Any comments, questions? Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chair Baylor. Just want to also share appreciation for city staff. We have a lot of questions that came up, a lot of different directions. This was a true brainstorming session to start with, to see what was possible. And I'm confident that the committee together explored as many options as are known and ones that are in development. Like to give just a kind of a brief summary of how we got to where we are. As I understand it, which I think plays into, you know, what we do with this recommendation. But we do have a primarily a loss of funding stemming back into, I guess, the 80s. That was through forestry and that, as over time, led to, on the whole, a underfunded improvement program. There have been efforts over since then to supplement that have been minimal and not enough to keep up. Time, a 3 cent gas tax, there's been efforts to put more gas tax legal to, oh, I don't know what year that was, but there are other contributing factors. There'd be construction methods, inspections, use by vehicles that degraded in past or better than what would be expected. But we're in a position where we just don't have the funds by any means that we have available to us now to address it. And we want, as a community, to have roads that ideally, that's where the term we came from, ideally would be trying to maximize both the long-term care or reducing the long-term repair of those roads once they are maintained. So to have to redo a little complete road based up as far as getting it to a certain condition. That's how we affect it, 72 figure. So that's the most long-term goal to be as responsible as possible with funding in the future, as well as to mitigate the problems of vehicle damage to a residence. And this goes to just the ability to travel and live in peace in the town and have something that we probably invested in as part of our infrastructure, which is the highest, you know, priorities in a city where you collectively pool your resources to to have high quality of life and. to have high quality of life and not be a detriment to it. So, that being said, it's almost under the amount of money and likely it's that will have to be garnered to get to that condition. And so, this is truly the best effort recommendation. I think that we've come up with a lot of input that's indicated. But I would stress that as much effort, I want to be part of that, to push for legislators to address the root cause to why we're having funding shortfall is probably the best thing that we can do. But my personal opinion is we can't just wait for them. We need to put some of these issues, of these measures forward, put it to the residents, and continue to be able to just answer the whys as to probably out here what this is going to look like and highlight the accountability pieces of it about we want this money to go to streets, gets collected, and make sure that that's where it goes. So with that, I just finish by saying thank you to fellow councilors as well for all the emphasis.
Councilman Black?
Yeah, I want to thank the committee too. There was a lot of meetings and a lot of material. A lot of it we've rehashed over the years as vehicles become more fuel-efficient. Of course, the gas tax becomes less beneficial. And so, there are a lot of reasons that vehicles being part of that. We had a lot of conversations about how can we tap into that, how can we look at other revenue sources? And I think it is fair to say, as Councilor, we explored all the options that we're up against. And I think initially we were looking at, well, we're going to fix it, let's fix it. But then we started looking at the price tag and like, oh my gosh, there's no way. You know, we're going to be able to support that. So I think that's a good, big step, but the one that's reasonable. I think it's one that we should definitely pursue. The education piece and the oversight, I think, are key. When that last gas tax failed, there were comments in social media about, well, then just spend the money somewhere else. Well, actually, that's a state constitution. And we are aligned, but I think that we need an independent group able to verify that, yep, that money was spent appropriately. These are the projects we promised, and these are the projects that we have. Or if they're believed, whatever reason is, having an independent group being able to weigh on that is going to be huge. So I want to say, I do want to also thank the committee and, I guess, I'm just looking at next steps. Like we mentioned Friday, is, okay, how do we move forward with this proposal?
Thanks, Councilor.
Yes, I want to echo the tremendous amount of time that citizen members of the committee contributed, including our chairman. Thank you, and... Oops, sorry. I just, again, wanted to thank all our citizen committee members. We're used to being in meetings, but we had a lot of local expertise come up, and particularly the leadership of our chairman to keep all the guests in the road, and the staff providing information every meeting. We were rotted with a lot of questions and they came back. And I do want to point out that these recommendations were tempered by the input we received at the public presentations, including the town hall. So we listened to you and, you know, tried to incorporate all your comments and wishes about what we would be willing to support because ultimately, we cannot impose these improvements on you. It must be approved by you, the voters, through a ballot initiatives for most of them. The one option we could, by edict, do would be a payroll tax, and we listened, and that was very unpopular. So we chose not to honor your wishes on that. Historically, kind of drove at about five miles paved road in the early fifties. And there was a big push to have neighborhoods pave your streets, go from gravel. And they used the limited improvement district where if another neighbors would support that, the neighborhoods were paved. Unfortunately, we didn't plan for the maintenance of those streets. So I'm looking forward to providing some historical perspective. But again, you give what you're willing to pay for is the bottom line. So you can't just complain about streets without being willing to at least pony it a little bit. Thank you.
I too want to say thank you to you. You were an amazing chair, and you really helped facilitate our meetings. Thank you.
Well, as far as next steps, Mr. Stewart. Mayor, it sounds like there might be some interest in trying to address this sooner than later. I was able to work with our city recorder to come up with a calendar. So if the council so chooses and would like to shoot for the November fifth election to send a request to the citizens to consider, we would need to submit some information based on the time requirement. So August sixteenth is kind of our first drop-dead date where we would have to propose the ballot title for publication notice. And so that's kind of our first step. And then there's some next steps through September. By September ninth, I believe, we have to have a fully completed item to approve by the elections office. So with that in mind, I mean, it is April eighth, as each of you are aware, and August sixteenth will come very quickly. So I would ask that if council supports the direction of trying to get something on the November fifth ballot, that I would work with Mr. Sarah White and staff, and we would come back with some scheduled agenda items to help us work with council to understand what you would like to send to the citizens for votes so we can start working that process. And the sooner that we can get direction from you as to what that question is to the voters, then we can fine-tune that, get everything ready, and then hopefully optimize the amount of time that's left that we can send factual information to individuals. And then hopefully that will allow you as elected officials, committee members, and that to be able to sink their teeth into being able to try to encourage folks to support the measure at the ballot. So I don't believe we need to go through the items this evening, but definitely getting direction from you that, yes, we would like to work towards a November fifth ballot election, and we will come back to you with a schedule.
Councilor Stan?
Just be able to convince staff time to that issue and to education of other resources, one to inspire city staff. This is one of those cases.
Mayor and Councilor Stan, it's been my understanding that once a measure is placed on the ballot, the only thing that the city resources could be utilized for is to supply factual information. So there can't be anything that could be considered city staff lobbying or encouraging or supporting. It could only be factual. So generally, when it goes to the ballot, that's when I think our legal counsel is going to probably tell us to be super cautious and there's a city manager and make sure that we don't overstep that by using Mr. Sarah.
Yeah, I would just say, I would want to face, city staff's role is to educate, not advocate. Our job is to provide the highest quality, most complete information that we possibly can so that on both the council but also the public can make, you know, informed decisions. And that's the role we would play. I would just echo what folks said earlier, that I think having an oversight committee that creates accountability and also credibility that, you know, although, you know, as you said, we are duty-bound to spend the money on what it is that it was raised for. I think it provides, you know, some credibility for the council and also for the, and also the public appreciates the fact that it's an independent purpose.
So, I mean, we've got direction, move forward?
It's the lack of nobody saying no when our direction first step.
I think that's us from all the comments that folks, I mean, everybody's agreed with. I think what was spoken, we need to address this problem, and these are the steps that the committee recommended. And we would like to fine-tune those items and send it to a vote. So, I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, the practical matter of the next step would be we'll return with the plan. And that plan will be for us to get something on the November ballot. And it'll be in a format that the council can, you know, take it on and vote. Let's put it that way.
Thank you. Concerns from council? Councilor, thank you.
You, Mayor. I'd just like to address the point I was raising earlier on concerns over our budget. And the topic was brought up regarding the purchase of the new police vehicles. It dawned on me that I don't have a good picture of what it looks like and means in really, especially any of the departments in the city, specifically the police. What a fully trained, fully equipped staff and department looks like in terms of what our current budget allocation is. It's my understanding of departments being rebuilt, that we've long had staff positions budgeted but not filled. But as we are filling, as we are getting additional requests that come in, whether it be additional licenses for laser and body cam, swords for those things, additional vehicles. It just makes me wonder, okay, how long this prolonged? Well, can we say this is what a fully staffed department looks like? So I'm finding for, really, this is a perfect budget issue. And we'd like that information. Because we may get to the point where, hey, we have these numbers, let's say, if this is a staff department, what does that mean? Why is that a staff department? What are the needs for that road? And then this drives to, you know, where this should begin, which is the council goals for what this town, we want it to look like and how we want to operate and how we want to be able to serve the citizens. So I'd like to have that conversation. I think it would be bring out of peaceful before the budget process. But I think assuming that sitting down as a council, whatever is necessary stands out. And at least formally the questions that we need to better inform those goals and make sure they're realistic. So, this is my... Sure, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This week, last week, okay, I don't know, last week. Last week I attended the General Government Policy Committee for the League of Oregon Cities. And they said that's led by Scott Winkles, who is one of the lobbyists for the Oregon Cities. He said it was the highest turnout committee that he ever staffed in his time at the Oregon Cities. So there's great participation from across the state. I wanted to share with you some of the issues that we'll be discussing. This was just the first meeting, so we'll be discussing different general government policy items. And the point of the committee is to come, for me to come back to this council, get your feedback and bring it back to that committee. Then that committee makes recommendations to the General League of Oregon Cities, and then all the cities vote on what their legislative priorities are going to be for the long legislative session next year. So some of the things we talked about were recreational immunity. The Newport case, this short session, there was no permanent fix because you really only got two weeks to deliberate, and that wasn't ideal for a permanent fix. So I will be coming back with any input that you'd like to give for recreational immunity. I don't think we closed any trails or anything that our city manages, but other cities did close trails and access to public spaces out of concern. Another one was Measure One Ten Reform Financing, financing the deflection programs. Most of those, the deflection programs are run through the counties. However, the changes in our criminal justice system affect our police department. It affects what happens in our communities as well as the availability of substance use treatment. As we heard in public comment, substance use is quite a problem in our community. So that will be something we'll talk about. There was a question about how do we feel about signing bonuses and benefits? It would have to be negotiated with Oregon's pay equity law. It seems that with the current pay equity law, signing bonuses are not allowed. And, you know, that in the past, in particular for law enforcement agencies, we just poach each other if we, if when we could allow us. So the committee was kind of torn and thought they might want to just stay neutral. Another item for discussion was recall reform. The league attempted to make changes in twenty thirteen session. Some of the things they talked about was the ability of a counselor to have some finding of fact as to whether, and have maybe a fair hearing so that voters would understand it, well, the reason for recall was factual or not. Another item was for recall reform is to make sure that it goes to the next regularly scheduled election so that it doesn't trigger a special election, so the city's not having to foot that bill. I know that's been a concern of ours. Then we talked about Zoom bombing and how pernicious and pervasive that has been. I learned a lot about Zoom bombing, things I didn't even know, about sock public accounts, very scary stuff. And next meeting, we'll talk a lot about public safety financing. And potentially a transient lodging tax change where public safety costs would be eligible for transient lodging tax benefits. We do know transient lodging tax is meant to be a place in bed, economic development. So I think that's pretty curious, and I appreciate additional conversation around that. So if any of those things spark your interest, feel free to reach out to me. I'll be bringing back more details as we talk about them. This is just an overview.
Anyone else? Councilor Stan?
Thank you. I would like to... We kind of deepered out budgeting exactly, so is that more specific to the police department in the initial, we've been now playing the process?
Well, it sparked the police department, and I would say I probably have less concern about the others in later structures and in price funds. It's pretty clear how they're supposed to function, but I think about the police department. I don't have, there's been more questions about, hey, what's the lineup, what are the differences, how much is necessary? And so that's the one I would primarily approach something. Anytime I start looking at stuff, you know.
I think I reckon a desire to be to have that conversation. I think we also heard Dr. Silvery report of judgment, brought in this corollary notion of how the police and the court work in tandem to hold people accountable for their misdeeds in this community and what it means to spend the resources we do on the police. for their misdeeds in this community and what, what does it mean to spend the resources we do on the police. Justice, or it looks like what does be the young justice, quite in this community, you know, um, people jailed and what are we doing this in our own society? I think it's variable.
Well, I just wanted to comment real quickly too on, um, we do have our work session coming forward in May, uh, for the homelessness issue. And, um, I was telling Councilor Erwin, I've been going back through and rereading all of our minutes from those time periods. So I can get a better grasp, because we really went through a lot to get into where we are today. And just if you could take some time, and it's a lot of time, but if, um, just to kind of re-educate ourselves, that it's very helpful. At least I've done it to be for myself, um, so you can really like not repeat a lot of those things that you do a little refresher. Uh, I, I also talked to Chris McKelster today, because I got a phone call from a constituent that said that, um, she had seen online that we were only at thirty-nine percent capacity, uh, at ninety-nine, so of course that was concerning. And so I called him directly and he said that, explained it to me that they don't track, they're not part of tracking the Blaine County. And so those numbers weren't accurate, but that we do have three units being used for storage, so those can be taken off. And I asked him why we're using those for storage. And, um, he told me some things that I hadn't heard before and I thought, um, should go back to council. Um, that he said that, um, that he had issues with people pushing their way in to the camp. And, um, pretending to be elected officials, um, said someone pretended to be me. And I had never even heard that happen, so I was quite shocked by it. Um, and he said that, um, that he, uh, there was four units in disrepair that, um, need to be fixed. Um, and, uh, also he said there was no electricity to them, so I don't know how that happened. But, um, um, he said that, um, most of his new referrals now are coming from hostile. That he's not really taking people out of camps anymore. And, um, I asked him why and he said that it was because those were the more fragile people that he thought, not so fragile that his staff couldn't take care of them, but they were just more fragile. And then he also said that, um, most of the folks that are at, um, North Douglas and at, um, the main street location, Twelfth Street are not from here. And because I asked him if most of the people in ninety-nine from Cottage Grove, and he said they were either born here, went to high school here. Uh, somehow remain here, but they returned here. But he did say that most of the people at the other two sites were from Cottage Grove. And so that feels interesting coming from him. Um, uh, what else can you tell me? I did talk to, um, and I referred this to, um, Mr. Fowler and Mr. Seren. I, um, also talked with Representative Conrad and asked me about funding for the ninety-nine site. And, um, he, uh, got me in contact with Leon Knapp. And she's been, uh, really great about giving us some information on, and keeping us informed on what's going on. And that there is a good possibility that we may get some funding for ninety-nine, that we, she said we certainly qualify. Um, she said that, um, that there's been a couple, a few around the county that were at risk of closing in March. And she managed to give them, um, emergency funding just for a matter of months until this process goes through. And so she said that that might be something that could happen for us as well, um, beings that our, our money's running out. So anyway, I just wanted to make counsel aware of all that. Anyone else?
Okay. Report from City Manager.
Well, good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. Uh, first I just want to follow up on a comment that was made by two council members regarding the police budget. And, you know, I guess I'd simply say you're right. Um, we have been doing a good piece named, uh, Police Budget at this point, uh, as we get toward the end of this fiscal year. Uh, suffice it to say, in the next fiscal year, our goal will be to have a budget that fully funds, uh, a level of service that our citizens both, you know, need and deserve, uh, from their police department. Now, if that means we need to do a much deeper dive into the police budget, uh, we'll certainly be happy. Um, and, you know, we have scheduled some meetings with, with Councilmember Earl, uh, to talk about that next week. And, you know, hopefully, uh, we can get an idea of exactly what it is you're looking for so that we can include that. Uh, kind of deep dive into the police budget as part of the election process. Um, this was brought up earlier by a public testimony. Earlier today, we started a cleanup, um, at the, uh, Twelfth Street camp. And, uh, just want to turn to Jay, I want you to talk a little bit about that.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, so today at one o'clock, um, we had about, say, eight to ten volunteers, uh, Teresa from the community center, myself. We started cleaning up the Twelfth Street site. We had dropped in one of those big, big, uh, roll-off dumpsters. I'm sure they have a real name that's a roll-off dumpster, but you get the idea. Um, we had a second, we called up for a second one during the process because it turns out there was rather more to be disposed of than we had originally thought. Um, we got pretty good, uh, participation from residents in the camp who were helping out. Um, as with all things, there's a percentage that are happy to help, a percentage that sort of vanish or stay in their tents. Um, and then a much smaller percentage of people who have trouble, um, meaningfully participating. Uh, we do have a number of folks who, you know, mental illness, people that are there. But overall, it was, um, very positive. We ended up filling up both of those roll-off dumpsters. Um, there's still, I would guess probably between a quarter and a third, uh, cleanup left to do in Twelfth Street. Uh, so in retrospect, we're very glad we didn't get over ambitious and try to schedule both of them to the same day. Because we might kill all our volunteers if we tried that. Uh, but in general, things are, are getting better. It helps with the weather's a little better because it's really hard to get people to, to clean up when it's, you know, pouring down rain. Um, so overall, a, uh, I would call it a promising, um, early status. So we have some, uh, we're gonna be having some more, uh, scheduled times to go out and continue at Twelfth Street. And then we'll, we'll take on notice after that. Um, and then we'll see how, how well we can keep that going, with the regular, more, more regular cleanup efforts. While the volunteers hold out, we can hopefully keep, you know, kind of maintain it at a, uh, relatively nice level of, of hygiene and, and commonness.
Um, I just want to really thank our extremely dedicated volunteers, uh, who came out to do this. Uh, most of these are folks who probably not welcome to the city council, leaving and thanking publicly for the work that they do. Uh, but, you know, we really appreciate what they've done. And just to echo what Jay said, this is the beginning of a process, guys. Uh, this is the first step, uh, and it's something we hope to be able to do ongoing. Now, the goal is for us to do some of these basic cleanups that are now in May eighteenth. And when we get to May eighteenth, to be able to come in and talk with the council about some processes and, you know, some options going forward. And to just echo something, uh, that the mayor said earlier. We certainly are planning to start off that meeting, uh, by getting some background and some history. And we are working with the folks, uh, saying this is the call. Uh, they will be facilitating you that. Um, and you are going to be meeting with them over the next couple of weeks. We're hoping to have that through next council meeting and give you a better idea of the agenda and kind of timeline, uh, of what we'll be doing on the eighth. So, we're in. And that would be the end of our report for the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I might, I wanted to follow up on what I had from Friday morning. At the next city council meeting on the twenty-second, we have scheduled a six P M. work session with, uh, Elaine Howard to receive her feasibility report on the potential of the Purver Unionville District or a couple that she studied. So I wanted to verify with council that, uh, six P M. we'll work on that date. Same heading on six. I believe it's Monday, the twenty-second. Okay, thank you. That was a good one. Oh, and the, and the last item we also brought up on Friday was, um, on May twenty-seventh is Memorial Day. I guess, um, the question to council was, should that meeting be canceled? Or should we try to, um, set it a different date on, like Tuesday, the, the twenty-eighth? Or what, what's the appetite of the council?
Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, do we have a, a sense of the, you know, the business that we tend to, uh, if, if it can be moved to other meetings, uh, I mean, they'll be canceled. Um, but if there is something.
Uh, my recommendation would be that, you know, the, it's covered to tell them that half, that, that what we're gonna have for an agenda. Uh, is the council agree to move it, uh, to a certain step? Um, as we get closer, uh, we'll take a look at the agenda and probably come back with a recommendation of whether or not actually.
Uh, will we emerge from the work session with actionable, um, items that we would need to continue to discuss or move forward? Or?
That would certainly be the goal, uh, that we would be able to, as I said, we're still in the process of formulating the agenda. Uh, but the, you know, we begin by discussing, you know, how did we get here? Um, just having the history and then talk about some options going forward. And if council is able to come to a consensus on those options, uh, yes. You know, their, their, the goal would certainly be to have something actionable, uh, that we could move forward.
Well, I would prefer that we would, uh, reschedule a meeting sooner than, like, June tenth. That could be, otherwise we'll be going nearly a month after the work session with no action.
So, you know, now.
I've been, instead of strictly, so strictly canceling the meeting scheduled on Mon- Monday, May twenty-seventh, that we reschedule that to a, a closer date than the next proposed meeting than June tenth.
So.
Okay, good, this, I, I heard that, but did you hear, did you say again?
Counselor, yeah. Report from the city attorney?
About, Mayor, do we need a motion to actually move?
Sorry.
Do we need a motion to actually move? I mean, I would assume you do. So, but I'll, that we, uh, uh, move the, uh, city council meeting scheduled for, uh, January twenty-seventh to Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, same time, same here.
Second.
We have a motion with the second, all, all in favor, signify by saying aye. I propose. Now, report with the city attorney.
Okay. I'm unmuting. I'm unmuted. Am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
You are.
Okay, I see your thumbs up. Um, all right, well, there, there is a lot to discuss, but I think I'll, uh, not spend a lot of time tonight. I'm, I'm finding that virtual, at least via this device, is not as, um, effective as I had hoped. So I, I do want to thank you all for, um, I, I heard repeated discussion from the Friday agenda session, and I really appreciate that. Thank you so much for putting our prior discussions about that into play and, um, facilitating your new rules. Um, uh, there was some discussion this evening about the unhoused workshop. And I believe I'm going to attend it. I was planning to attend virtually, but if I can't get my virtual to work a little better, I will be there in person, um, after a conversation with, uh, the city manager. One reason is because the Portland challenge, Portland has caved on their regulations that were the dawn to dusk regulations, kind of the model for the state for all cities who wanted to go that route. And the city of Portland has decided not to defend those regulations. So that's large news that came out last week, and we can discuss what it means, if anything, for Cottage Grove, uh, in the workshop. Um, I also got news from Oregon Government Ethics Commission. Uh, while its website says that the required training, uh, during a public official's term is available, is currently available. It is not available, and Department of Justice has advised, O- Oregon Government Ethics Commission received funding to hire five new trainers. They have hired five new trainers. They have a training ready to launch, but Department of Justice has advised them not to either give any trainings nor certify anyone to provide those trainings unless and until, uh, O G E C proposes, uh, administrative rules to govern ostensibly those trainings, even though the, the statute says that the, um, rules would govern grievances. So it's a little bit of a mess, and we can anticipate that there won't be trainings until mid to maybe even late summer. Um, which makes it uncomfortable for budget members whose term finishes, you know, July first at the latest. But, uh, I assume there won't be any, um, follow-up from O G E C on anyone who doesn't get their training until it's provided. Let's see. Um, I will be happy to help with the transportation utility fee, uh, per the ad hoc committee's recommendations. And/or advise on the allowances of, uh, electeds to campaign on a gas tax measure while staff remains, um, providing neutral, non-advocacy material. I, I believe that, um, is my full report. Are there any questions?
Councilor Erwin.
Thank you, Gary. Um, I think I read that the Oregon government, this, uh, commission has had their purview extended to, uh, government, uh, meetings as well. And, uh, is that something you're aware of? I don't know if that's part of what's going, but you do get training updated.
I'm not familiar with that. We spoke with Susan Myers today and received the information that I provided to you tonight. So I, I, I haven't heard anything beyond that. Um, I can look into it though, if you'd like.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Gary.
Okay, yeah, thank you so much.
I'd ask for my agenda, I see now, so this meeting has been.